Fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, special Wassila City Council meeting is called to order. The time is six P. M. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Bernie?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Rousa is absent this evening. You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, with councilmembers Johnson, Vlach, and Brown participating in person, councilmembers Bernie and Harvey telephonically.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And Crystal, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. We are moving on to public participation, persons to be heard. And we have none, and there is no audience present tonight. Madam Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's fiscal year 2022 budget discussion and departmental presentations, Committee of the Whole, and this is regarding ordinance serial number 2121, providing for the adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2022 and appropriating funds to carry out said budget.
Is there a motion to enter the Committee of the Whole?
I move that we enter into the Committee of the Whole.
Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
The motion has been moved by Councilman Vlach and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to enter into the Committee of a Whole. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we are now in the Committee of the Whole. Okay. Tonight, we are doing the first part of the budget, and nine o'clock will be the latest that we will go. We will have a break in between. So Troy, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor, to council. So the first department that's up tonight is Management Information Systems. In the book, that is on page 108. I believe the E-packet is 124.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Troy. What we are going to do is I will give the, not the item number, but the category number. If you have any questions, please let me know. So, beginning on page 108, the account number 10. Account number 20.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, account number 10, then that includes the position that is on our table here, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, yes. It actually does include the MIS manager that's being proposed.
Thank you.
Okay. Account number 20.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Back to 10, Troy. So, there aren't any other employees in Management Information Systems? There is? Okay, I was just seeing, it doesn't look like...
So, Madam Mayor, to Councilmember Vlach, there's actually, currently, we have two positions in MIS.
Excuse me, Troy, is your mic on?
Yes, ma'am. Hello?
Yeah.
Yes, we have two positions.
Okay.
Full-time positions currently.
Okay.
We're proposing a third IT manager.
So you don't currently have a manager, per se? Just some worker bees that report to you?
That's correct. Well, we have two managers, and that's one of the aspects of this new position, right? So, over time, the MIS division has reported to the mayor.
Oh.
The MIS division has reported to me.
Okay.
And one of the things that is being proposed with manager is for consistency, having a manager oversee those two positions, as well direct city projects overall. Obviously, the city's growing. We're only two IT individuals to house the library and museum and us and et cetera. They get very busy and, very busy in aligning projects and the importance and priorities of projects, as well as doing the budget and things like that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Account number 20. Number 30. Number 40.
Hey, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Councilmember Bernie here. Troy, I just have a question about, on our group insurance and PERS and 20, and I apologize for having to go back. Are you finding that we're pretty much, through all departments, going to be holding that PERS number pretty steady? I know it's a conversation that seems to come up every year, so...
Through the mayor to Councilmember Bernie, absolutely, Councilmember Bernie. When we talk about the PERS line, that's a very simple calculation. It really is 22% of gross that contributed by the city across all departments, you know, depending on what their, what that salary is. As far as health insurance, now, if you, local 302 operators, the city has an agreement through local 302 Operators Trust that includes the non-represented employees, as well as their own members of local 302, as well as WPDAs, employees, all our police, public safety. Those are, those, the non-rep and WPDAs are through agreement, and of course, the local 302 members are through the operators themselves. So, when we talk about all of the union bargaining agreements, they all stipulate that the health insurance premiums from one year to the next will not grow greater than 8%. That's negotiated in there, and so long as it stays under the 8%, the cities, the city will pay that rate. If it goes over the 8%, then whatever that is, is then a premium to the employees. So it does two things. One, it helps the city budget. It helps us understand what our costing is. But additionally, it promotes the unions to keep that rate under, because they certainly don't want their members to pay a premium for healthcare.
Thank you for that clarification. I just think it helps the discussion as we go through each department as well, to understand it.
Okay. We are on...
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I just have one quick question. I just want to fully understand PERS. I thought that I did, and maybe I don't. So, PERS has basically, then, only contributed to health insurance, dental, those kind of benefits? Is that correct?
PERS is the Public Employees Retirement System. That is the retirement side. When we talk about healthcare, that's different. That's not PERS. All right? So...
Okay. So that would be item 2010, then?
Yeah.
Is health insurance. Okay, that's what I thought, and then you transitioned into talking about health cares with PERS, and then I got confused in that.
Those are two questions from Councilmember Bernie there.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to number 50. Number 60.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, small twos and equipment went up considerably. Could we just have a reason? Is that just because of computer and whatever that would be associated to support the new position?
So, that's part of it. It's primarily in relation to the furniture and necessary needs for office setup for that particular employee.
Number 99. Any questions? Okay. We... Jamie? Yes?
Through the, to the body, through the, Madam Mayor, this is a clerk. It may help, Mr. Johnson, I don't know, and you may have seen this, but if you turn over to page 109, you flip to page 109, and you look at that account number, the 20, as an example, the 6015, you'll see itemized out there, the categories that, the items that make up that line item.
Thank you very much for that information.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. Is there any questions for the MIS? Troy?
Madam Mayor, to the council, I would actually be remiss to know that, you know, Terry took the time tonight to be here. Terry is our IT guy, you know? And so, if there's any technical type of questions that council might have in relation to the city's infrastructure or what have you, he's our guy. So, if there is any, I just want to make sure that that opportunity is...
And thank you for being here, Terry. Okay, anybody have any questions for him before we go on? Hearing none? Terry, you're free to go. Thank you.
Unless you want to stay here with the rest of the room.
Okay, we are moving on to planning. In your budget binder is pages 94, 95, on your E-packet, page numbers is 110 and 111. 95. Okay, we are starting with account number 10. Any questions? Number 20. Number 30. Number 40. Number 50. Number 60. Okay.
I know this is great.
I just want to point out, as, when I was listening to Councilmember Vlach and a number of positions, so if you go to, like, the first page of the sections, you'll see what the, so, planning on page 92 is two positions. So that would have showed up under MIS as two positions, two positions, and then a third position. So just...
Okay. Thank you, Archie.
Yep. That's, that's actually consistent with all divisions or departments. You'll see that, you'll see a breakdown if there's splits, for example, an allocation of one employee going from, I'll use Archie and I, if I've got an employee that's shared with Archie's division, you'll see that in that page.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, look at that.
All right, we are moving on to administration. Your binder is page 80 and 81. Your E-packet is page 96, 97. Okay. Account number 10. Number 20. Number 30. Number 40.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Brown?
To the finance director, I've seen on several, I just want to make sure I understand, in 50, the insurance, what's that covering?
So, all the divisions in the insurance, and this is actually a good question, every year we have it, some of the departments have auto insurance, but mostly, everybody is going to have a general liability insurance line component. That is a component based on payroll.
Okay.
Another one is going to be property. And then, like, when we get into airport, there's specific insurance related to that as well. But it's typically your general liability, your property, your auto, and those type of policies.
Thank you.
Troy, can I? It looks like everything's going down.
In the personnel?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, as you recall...
And I looked on that page, it looks the same.
It exactly is the same, and that's, that's a very good question. So, prior administration, prior mayor, termed, and because that prior mayor accumulated, paid time off, there was a budget component associated to that. So you're seeing a decrease in the wage side. Additional to that, that mayor had six years, so he had step increases as well, over time, and now we're starting over.
Okay.
So, you got decreases in that component. And then, on the benefit side, that's obviously going to relate to those wages, and specifically, when you look, PERS is a good one to look at, because if you look at actual, you're going to see, very comparatively speaking, you're going to see low numbers compared to current year budget and/or this year proposed budget, and that's simply because the prior mayor could not be in PERS.
Okay.
Whereas, this administration can.
So what you're saying, we should start over every year, we could save money?
Yeah.
We are on to account 50. Troy?
Yes, ma'am.
On the vehicle fund? How come we're not doing anything?
Madam Mayor, there's 10,000 allocated there.
Oh.
So, that...
Never mind, I see.
In the 99, to council, and this again is consistent across departments, there's a technology component that you may see, and/or a vehicle component. Those transfers, or, excuse me, those are allocated funds being transferred to either the vehicle fund or the technology replacement fund, they're capital project funds. Now, those funds actually acquire the said vehicles and/or computers each and every year for the replacement cycle. From this component, the operating side of the component, it keeps a flat line on budget as it transfers each and every year, so these, so departments, we use the mayor's budget, if she decides she's going to buy a vehicle this year, you don't see a $50,000 spike in her budget this year, and then seven years later, you see another one. It's a flat line across the board in the operations. And then the, the capital projects then acquire the necessary assets.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions on general government? And we are moving on to general administration services, they're in your binder, page 84, 86. On your E-packet is 100 to 102. Okay. Account number 10. 60.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Councilman Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Just want to understand, I understand that in 60, where it says technology, that's for replacement of a computer in future years, but up in 40, you got repair and maintenance, is that on the, on the computers also?
So, repair and maintenance, the line, the 4030 line, is specific to oil changes in the vehicle.
Oh, okay.
Things like that. There's a component in there to replace the hands-free radio component in that vehicle.
Okay.
That's under the 4030 line. And you mentioned the 60s? I think you're looking at 6015?
I mean, I'm at 90, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a $300 transfer.
Right.
To the tech fund. So, it's, that's done every year. The $300 is actually, because there's only one computer.
Right. And that doesn't go to repair of a computer?
No.
Okay.
That goes to actually the tech fund.
Okay.
And acquire that fund, so when the replacement cycle comes.
Okay.
That money's there for replacement.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions on general and administrative? Hearing none, we will move on to human resources, which is page 90 to 91. Okay, account number 10.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just for council's insight on, on human resources, so, there's some changes within human resources. This year, specifically, we had transition in HR. Both of those positions rotated around. You're going to see some changes, like in the regular wages to temporary wages and the like. We had to pull funds to fund a temporary employee to come in for a while, and things like that. So due to that transition, and now we've got two full-time positions in HR, and so they are learning the ropes, so to speak, if you will, learning the city. They're very enthusiastic, they're very, really want to put on a forward-facing front for the city, which is, which is exciting for us. So some of these numbers that are in here, these changes, are to benefit HR, provide the training for them, give them the necessary tools for them, as well as promote these new employees, when they come in, to be excited to work for the city. So, I'll answer questions as we go, obviously, but I wanted to give a little...
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bernie here. Is there any plans for going to get a SHRM certification, or is either one of them certified through SHRM?
Through the, in the travel and training section of this budget, in the 50 category of travel training, you're going to see a description in there for SHRM. I believe under staff development, there's, you've got professional development of 1,500. You've got the SHRM conferences planned. So, yeah, they're, they're training. I've got them training.
I mean, it's an important thing to have. And any kind of training through SHRM can only benefit the city as a whole, right?
Mr. Bernie, if you will look on your page 107, it will show you where they are, that, that has been covered.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay. Any further questions on human resources?
Just a quick question on, I do see on page 91, under general supplies, it has human relations employee development. Why would that be under general supplies?
So, one of the things that HR is trying to do is, when a new employee is hired and they're onboarding, is to provide them some excitement, if you will. Welcome to the city, kind of thing. Might be a notepad with the city's logo saying, welcome aboard, or, or just something small, right? So they're trying to promote a little bit more of a forward-facing, welcome aboard concept, and that's...
Just some swag-type stuff?
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, so...
Okay. I was just wondering why it was under general supply, but that makes sense. That makes total sense. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to finance. In your binder is page 102 to 104. Okay, account number 10. Number 20. Any questions on finance?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know finance hired some people to help with the distribution of the COVID funds, COVID relief funds.
Yes.
I'm guessing that's not reflected here anywhere.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bernie, no. It's, that was all paid for through the CARES Act funding, and is accounted for in the CIP fund for that. in the CIP fund for that. Not through finance.
Any other questions? Here in none, we will go to code compliance. And the binder is 97, 98, and 128. In your e-packet, it's 113, 114, and 144. Okay, account number 10. Archie.
I want to point out, so this is, this position moved from the police department into the administration here, so that's why you see a lot of blanks. And we just held a flat budget carrying over. And the fact is, we put in, we interviewed a couple interviews over the last week, and we're pushing our candidate forward, we think's going to work out fine. So we're going to get that position filled here soon.
Thank you. Troy.
To piggyback on that, so the council, hate to have council flipping pages, but nonetheless, as Archie mentioned, code compliance being moved from public safety into general government. The prior budgets for code compliance in the book is on page 128.
And in your e-packet, it's on page 144.
So as Archie was mentioning, this is kind of a flat budget. In fact, the budget's decreased from before slightly, but in any case, thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me? Oh.
Madam Mayor.
Troy. So this is a new position, this is a new guy coming in, and I would think, what was our old guy's name?
Mikey.
Mikey, yes. That Mikey was probably at a top of some scale. Are we bringing that person in way up there, or are we bringing him down here?
Good question. So actually, is what we had to do is look at where code compliance was in the union pay scale of WPDA. And of course, look at our non-union pay scale. Look, reanalyze, relook at the job description of what we want, and then realign that. No, we didn't bring him all the way out here. I think it's more at the beginning, not step one.
Okay.
That's, yeah, step one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, account 20.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What, on, on, um, account 10, 20, what's that temporary line for?
That was my question. Code compliance also deals with the campground, the park rangers.
Forgot all about them.
[laughing].
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie. Okay. Account 20. Account 40. Any questions on code compliance? Here in none, we will move on to public works. And your page in the binder is 137 and 138. And in your, your e-packet, it's 153 and 154. This is administration under public works. Account 10. Archie.
Multiple divisions to public works, and so if you look on 136, you can see the, this is just the general admin for public works. So it's myself, my deputy director, and two clerks, and, and everything else that falls under this category.
Thank you. Any questions on public works administration?
Madam Mayor, just give me a minute here. Thank you.
Okay, we will be moving on to public works, road maintenance. Budget binder, 141 to 143. Okay, account number 10.
There.
Ms. Beal.
Waste disposal went up 122%. Archie?
Yes, we're having, we're finding more stuff dumped in the roads, so we're having more dumpster space needed to pick up couches and whatever.
Really?
Yeah.
Ew, okay. Thank you.
Account number 50. Any questions on public works roads?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm sure Archie's going to talk about this in another section, but what, what kind of vehicle purchases are you going to go for this next budget year?
So there's vehicles versus heavy equipment is.
Yep.
We, our vehicles are understa, you know, the service vehicles are under standard rotation, and then I have, uh, heavy equipment is listed in the CIP, and that would be discussed later.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on public works roads? Here in none, we will go to public works, property maintenance. Page 145, 147 in the binder, 161, 163 in your e-packet. Okay, account number 10. 50.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm seeing a pattern of the insurance line item kind of ticking up, line 50, 20. I was wondering if I can get an explanation on that uptick.
Troy.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bernie, I've talked about this a few times. So as you know, the last couple of years, specifically as it relates to property and general liability, um, property insurance, well, so the city belongs to a pool, Alaska Public Entity Insurance Pool, like AMLJIA, there's two of them in the state. The idea being that municipalities and school districts come together in a pool and share the risk, thus hopefully mitigating the premiums. But over the last few years, we've had a lot of property claims, school burns, you know, that kind of thing, as well as in the general liability claims of sexual abuse by police officers and the like. Because of those claims, we've seen a very steep uptick, and you've probably recalled Councilmember Ernie a couple, I think two now, over the last two fiscal years, where I've had to come back and adjust through separate appropriation to council to realign that insurance, because it was even higher than what we anticipated budgetarily. This year, I've anticipated, working with Alaska Public Entity Insurance, and Mike Combs, our broker, we currently have about a 24 to 26%, depending on the category, uptick across the board, but specifically in those category and general liability and property. Since this budget, the numbers aren't solid yet, but it's promising. I recently, being on the board of Alaska Public Entity Insurance, we just adopted a incentive, if you will, back to municipalities of the pool that will mitigate that cost. Now, what that means and how low from 24 or 6% that goes, that's yet to be seen, because the underwriters are still working on, on the policies. So hopefully, we can come back and say, yeah, we didn't have to do a budgetary adjustment this year, but, but that's what we've seen over the last few years, is because of these, these claims.
Yeah, I, I remember it well. What I don't remember, Madam Mayor, is if our uptick is due to issues we had in the city, or is it part of the, the claims to the pool?
So it's primarily claims to the pool. So when, when the city has a specific claim, we report those claims. It doesn't matter if it's workman's comp, or general liability type, or what have you. Those claims get reported to Alaska Public Entity Insurance. And, and as a member of the pool, the pool members share the risk. And so when underwriters write the policies for not just the basic insurance, but then the reinsurance, and the categories above and beyond, we, as members, all share in that risk. And that's where the premium reductions would be. If we were out there on our own, it would be more expensive, because you're just buying insurance, which is nothing more than risk protection. So we, as a pool, share that risk, and that's what, that's what helps us. But at the same time, as a pool, when a school building burns down, for example, and it's a $50 million claim, everybody in the pool shares in that. So it can work for and against, but so can buying just flat insurance on the open market.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Councilman Brown, so just a little, so everybody would go up 24 roughly percent?
Depending on what they have, right? I mean, what kind of properties we're talking about, obviously, the underwriters will come back and say, okay, school, you've got, you know, $350 million worth of school buildings. In City Wasilla, you only got $50 million of property. It's not necessarily, not necessarily apple to apple, but because APEI, one of the factors that they got to do is look at their members and their risks too, right? So they'll, they'll equate as best they can as members, but at the same time, if the city Wasilla is a high-risk member, they try to equate that into the, in the overall picture as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions? Did I, no, I need to go on to category 60. Any questions? Any questions on public works, property maintenance? Okay, we're going on to public works, park maintenance. It's, uh, budget binder is 161 to 163. Your e-packet is 177 to 179.
Madam Mayor, is this the last year we're going to see Meadows in our packet?
Let's hope so. It's only there because I have to report that FY '19 year.
Right.
Yep.
I'm just being silly, Troy.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are, um, culture and recreation services, and it's park maintenance. Account number 10. 99.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Can we go back to item 40, please? We have repair and maintenance at $27,900. Now, is that just for, that is for repairing our parks? Is that, is, do I, do I understand that line item correctly? That's all that we're allocating for materials to repair our parks?
That's correct.
Yes and no. If you look at page 162, at the top there, you'll see a breakdown of what's involved under that line item 40, 30. Now, on top of that, under general supplies, if they need lumber, for example, or something like that, they're going to use it at a supply line, or something to that effect. If it's contract, they'll take, add a contract services possibly.
So there's three line items there that service the parks, really. General supplies, repair, maintenance, and contractual services. So it's a combination, all of those.
And that, of course, would not include any improvements, per se.
Correct.
That's just maintenance.
That's, yeah, in part, yeah, the improvements are covered under the CIP.
So for instance, if we're replacing a pothole in a parking lot in a park, that would come under the park's budget, is that correct? Or city and streets?
No, no, if it's a parking lot, then it's under properties or parks. No, if it's a parking lot or a, like we were just talking about today, city hall parking lot, it's going to need some work, and that comes out of properties. If it's a pothole in a road, it's roads.
Okay.
So if it's, I don't have a lot of pavement in parks, most of all that's gravel, but...
No, but it, the things that you do have, for instance, is the, the toilet in, on the lake property there on Lake Wasilla, it's going to need some significant maintenance, and I only see $30,000, and I can look at that building. see $30,000, and I can look at that building and say, you're going to spend, I mean, a significant portion, and that's only one little thing that I know of.
Yeah, I mean, we actually, we actually had some volunteers paint that one this last summer. It looks a lot better. We've done some in-house modifications to it, and we've repaired it as needed. Vandalism is a problem.
I know.
And we see a lot of that in Idida Park. It's as much as a morale buster as it a budget buster. I mean, the guys show up in the morning and have to get it put back so people can use the park, but the budget's holding all right right now. I mean, the one thing that, I mean, more temporary employees, and I think we covered that a little bit, I mean, more staff time, and that there's a little uptick in the budget for that. That's as much a benefit as having supplies, as having manpower.
I don't know, just to me, you know, we haven't looked, I mean, we haven't really increased our maintenance costs over the last several years, really, as far as what we're putting into materials there, that's all.
Yeah, and you have to have the staff to be able to do it. So even if I had, you know, a barge of material somewhere, I don't have staff to be able to mobilize that and put it in, so it's a balance. So it'd be staff and materials if we wanted to do something there. But we're trying to, we did bump up the temporary staff line item under 1020 to help augment And if that budget, I mean, if we're going in the hole come spring, we'd come to the council and ask for more money. So this isn't, and that happens, like if we're under roads, if it snows a lot and I run out of what would be a normal year, so if we get out of the norm and we see we're not going to be able to maintain services to the end of the fiscal year, then we're right in front of you, explaining, you know, how we got through the year, and we're projecting another $30,000, for instance, that we need to get through June 30. So there's that avenue.
I understand, it's just that some of these things that I see, you know, as a citizen, as I'm walking around the parks, our playground equipment could use a lot of tender-loving care, and things like our toilet facilities, the picnic grounds, just due to vandalism and whatever, and I'm looking at that, and that looks awful thin to me. That just is a, that just sort of caught my attention there, just because I was expecting it to be almost twice that.
One thing I am waiting on is we are getting an estimate to see what it takes to modernize these restrooms. So I've got Wasilla Lake Park in the hands of an architect to give me a preliminary design and a cost estimate. I haven't received that yet. And then I could report to you, because we got four or five of those that are, yeah, they're quite old, and it'd be nice to modernize all of those. I'm waiting to get a number for that, and that would go into the CIP.
Is there any further questions on park maintenance?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown.
Mr. Brown.
I'm assuming on the waste disposal, that's trash and stuff left in the park that you happen to collect?
It's, yeah, we keep a dumpster at our shop, so a bit, part of it's that dumpster service, and so any kind of trash we collect, we haul it back to our shop and put in this large dumpster.
And second question, has there been, I know some other cities I've read about, they have done analysis and come up with programs on how to reduce vandalism and stuff. Has there been any kind of discussion, analysis on how we can reduce some of these causes?
Well, that's what the park rangers help to deter. We do have some cameras in Idida Park.
Thank you.
Any further questions on parks maintenance?
One last item then. The tunnel that goes to, under the railroad tracks, is that part of the parks and rec budget?
That's correct.
And that will remain closed this year?
I'd have to report to you what, where we're at with that. We've been having fits with the pump down there, keeping it, keeping the tunnel dry.
If it's, I mean, I know that that is a huge vandalism and a crime issue, that's why I'm just concerned, it might be cheaper just to keep it closed.
Yeah. And certainly, the winter's harder to keep it open with snow drips and things.
Yeah, then that would collect other issues that we don't want either.
Any more questions? Here are none. We are moving on to the sewer fund, page 199 to 200 in your budget binder, and your e-packet is 215 to 16.
Madam Mayor, may we take a two-minute break? I came right from work.
Mayor, I'd just like to point out on, when we look at these upcoming enterprise funds, it does have a CIP element in it, so it's a little different than the sheets we've been looking at. And then further in the section are more detailed sheets. For instance, the sewer consists of four divisions, but those are all summarized here on one page.
Mr. Harvey and Mr. Bernie.
Madam Mayor, is your microphone on?
No, but thank you. Can you hear me now?
Thank you, I can hear you.
Okay, we'll start over. Mr. Bernie, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, account number 10. Account number 20.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If we could get a brief, um, a brief explanation on, excuse me, on improvements that we're wanting to make.
Well, that's going to go in further detail, line by line, at another meeting, so I just soon might not cover 45 right now.
You would or would not? You want to wait?
Yeah, I'd like to wait and cover all the projects at one time, water, sewer, airport, roads, heavy equipment.
I remember, what was it, about four or five years ago, you had to replace all the lift stations, what do you call those, your pumps and the lift stations?
So that's an ongoing operational cost, and so that's not a CIP. So we budget every year for X amount of pumps to fail.
Okay.
So that's under, actually, we keep an inventory of that stuff.
That would be covered here in 45, though?
No, sir, that's part of the operating budget.
Operating, okay, all right, thanks.
So are those repairs then covered under budget 4030, is that correct?
Yeah, under repair and maintenance and wherever we buy the pumps out of.
Right, we buy the pumps out of the 699 under that inventory clearing account.
There we go, yeah. So that keeps, I have one staff member, so the labor is under city staff, so it's just parts and materials for us, but that's, I have one person that, that ties up whole person doing that year round, nearly.
Okay, account 50.
Madam Mayor, I just want to fall back and point out one other thing on the sewer, which is, you can see on the water and airport, but like on top of page 198, you can see what the operating revenue is and the operating expenses for the sewer fund. So being these enterprise funds, we're tracking the revenue, obviously.
We are moving on to the water fund, page 214 to 215 in your budget binder, and 230,
Madam Mayor, can I just get a quick explanation on the Richmond Hills project?
Yes. Archie?
Yeah, so we have a boost, in fact, you'll be seeing an ordinance coming up soon to kick this project off. So the area up by Lowe's and the shops at Sun Mountain, that's an upper pressure zone. So there's a booster station located basically behind the Alaska Club, so that picks up the water there and lifts it up, comes in there at about 40 PSI, goes out at 70, so we have at least 50 or 60 PSI up on the hill. That includes Lithia, Ford, everything down to, is that Red Robin? So that's what I call our upper pressure zone, then it drops back down to Walmart, and then it gets, it's going downhill, and then that transitions to a lower pressure zone. So that area is served just by a single booster station that's, oh man, it's got to be 15 years old now. We've had some hiccups, and we have more development going on, so I've had, actually, Lowe's call me, Lowe's corporate asking me what's up with this city. So, you know, usually we get, we're pretty responsive. If anything goes down there, it drops to 20 PSI up on the hill, so there's no redundancy. Everywhere else in the water system, I have redundancy, like our Spruce Avenue well went down, but we're able to adjust other wells and keep, you know, the reservoirs full. But if this one booster station goes down, it, we're scrambling. The fact is, even after they change out a pump, I have to turn the water completely off to everyone downstream, and so that's just not a good situation. So the project is intended to put a second booster station in, a parallel one right next to the first one on the same property. So, and this would have its own backup generator, it's got a booster station, typically uses a couple small domestic pumps for the day-to-day flow, and has a large high-flow pump for fire flow. So in this case, the Richmond Hills booster station has the three pumps, and we're going to propose some kind of combination of pumps that will do the same thing, modern technology. The older technology uses something called a clay valve, so it's really slow to respond. So when you turn on a fire hydrant and try to test it, you have to be patient for that thing to ramp up, and the newer technologies eliminate that. So this project is coming your way, it's a big ticket item, it's really needed. We have a hotel coming in that area, so it's, I think it's a critical piece of infrastructure, and it's likely, this was a kind of a placeholder money, the $500,000 for construction costs, probably going to be more than that, you're going to be seeing about $250,000 appropriation for the design, and that's all detailed out, coming to a meeting soon.
Are you trying to get the work done this year?
Yes, I want to get in the ground this year, get a foundation package going, get the yard piping in, so we go in to freeze up and at least get the building shell up, some of the pumps and electrical controls are along lead time, so a year from now, we want to be operating.
So is there going to be any 2021 costs associated with it?
That's what's coming your way, yeah. I want to kick the design off, middle of May, get them started. So there, I got two council meetings to appropriate the initial funding, which is going to be, I think it's, yeah, $265,000 I'm asking for right now to get that going. Well, not today, but, another couple meetings.
Understood.
Madam Mayor and Archie, with the new development, I mean, obviously, a hotel is going to have far more water demands than probably your current clients on that hill right there. Are you sure that we're, that this is going to be sufficient for that, number one? And number two, can the developer of this hotel contribute to our capital investment for their benefit?
Well, it's for the benefit of everyone in the pressure zone, so I wouldn't single out one customer for that. And we're designing for fire flow, so that's going to be a couple order magnitudes greater than anything they're going to need for a day-to-day flow. So everything in the water system is designed for fire flow, which is 15, for instance, 1,500 gallons a minute for four hours out of one fire hydrant. That's what all our reservoirs are designed for. The day-to-day flow, even for a hotel, isn't, is going to be a small fraction of that.
Any further questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I could get an explanation, please, on 8010 debt service principle?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So as I reported, this line and the following line under interest will pay the debt, the last remaining debt that the city has.
That is outstanding news.
Yes, and that gets paid March of, if this is approved, it'll get paid March of '22. The city can say it's debt-free.
Then any other city in Alaska can say that, I wonder?
I haven't found one yet.
That's awesome.
We're very unique. Okay, we are moving on to the airport fund, page 230, 231 in your budget binder, and Okay, account number 10. 45. 50. 60. 70. 80. 99.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just a general question, um, are, are we, um, moving forward on, um, any special upgrades out there at the airport? Any tie-downs, hangars?
Archie?
Yes, ma'am. I've got a preliminary design underway for, uh, additional lease lots and tie-downs on that property we acquired a few years ago, the 70 acres, so that's in a preliminary design stage. Uh, we're getting money this year to do a little bit of runway maintenance from FAA. Uh, we've got, uh, the runway just doesn't meet demand for FAA funding quite yet, it is, we've got 20 years where the project's in our master plan and the runway's in there for long-term, we've got some short-term apron work in the queue with FAA, it's when they, we're willing to turn loose of some of their money, um, uh, there's continuing the apron on the near side, uh, that's next up on the list, uh, for FAA funding, uh, because we have waiting lists for tie-downs and hangar space, or lease lots for hangar space. Uh, we expect the last couple of hangars to be built out this summer, there, so everything's leased out, uh, and then the industrial side apron, that's next on the list, uh, for FAA for funding on the far side of the runway.
Too bad they couldn't give us the money to do another 1,500-foot runway, huh?
Absolutely. Yeah, the next, yeah, we would go to 5,100 feet from 37, that's, that's in the master plan to do that as the next step, and eventually, if there's enough room, to go to 6,000 feet.
Madam Mayor? Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Councilman Brown, with the tie-downs and the traffic increase, are we approaching a place where it's almost time for a full-time, at least one full-time employee?
Not yet. So, yeah, we're, we're still an unmanned airport, so it's, it's, you fly in, visual flight rules, fly out, there's no tower, there's none of that, there's none of that in the foreseeable future, uh, but once we, yeah, we get all the apron space built out and we even are calling out for a modest terminal facility, uh, then we probably start to get to that threshold.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions on the Airport Fund? Hearing none. Is there a motion to exit committee of the whole?
I move we exit the committee of the whole.
A second?
Councilman Brown, second.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, we are out of the committee of the whole. The next on the agenda is audience comments, and there's not anybody present. So we are on to, uh, the clerk, your comments, please, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, so council, we'll just pick back up on Monday, um, Monday's packet was released today, so you'll see the agenda, um, for that, we'll start Monday with the museum, library, rec services, Menard Center, go through police, MatCom, et cetera, and if we don't finish on Monday, which we're doing great, we should, we do have a special meeting scheduled on Wednesday, the 21st, so we're able to pick up there, and then next regular meeting will be on the 26th of April, so that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Also, if you'd like to leave, one last thing, if you'd like to leave your Budget Binders here, feel free to do so, we'll put them in your box, or if you want to take them with you, just remember to bring them to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bernie?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
No comment, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Harvey?
No comment.
Councilmember Vlock?
No comments.
Councilmember Johnson?
No comment.
Thank you all for your time, and we appreciate your diligence of going through the budget before you came to council tonight. It makes for a more efficient meeting. So with that, we are adjourned at 7:20.
James Harvey.
Pass left.